Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Committee of the Whole for Monday, September 21st. I'm Counselor Peter Wainwright, chairing tonight. In the council chamber with me on my left is Mayor McNeil Smith. On my right, Counselor Garnett. And joining us by video are Councillors Duncan, Fallett, O'Keefe, and Rin Tool. So I'd like to call the meeting to order and start out by acknowledging that we're holding our meeting tonight in the territory of the Wasanich Nation. Committee, you have the agenda in front of you. Are there any additions or deletions?
Move the agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay, that's moved and seconded. Any discussion? Call the question. All in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Moving on then, we've got the minutes of our regular Committee of the Whole meeting of September 8th.
Will the minutes be approved? Second.
Okay. Any discussion, corrections? Hearing none. I'll call the question. All in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Moving on then to Item 5, Presentations. The first presentation is the Sydney Childcare Inventory and Action Plan, Final Report. And we have a presentation by Greg Awai. Does staff want to introduce this, or are we just going straight in the presentation? Okay. Mr. Awai, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here with my partner Jane Wharton. He'll be presenting with me. Thanks for having us tonight. Just bear with me for a moment while I get our presentation on the screen. So, the Standards of Childcare Action Plan. As you're probably aware, that there is a chronic shortage of daycare spaces, which is causing many problems for families throughout the region. And also, so it's impacting family life, their incomes, and also our local economies. Six partners got together and applied for a funding from the Union of B.C. Municipalities, originally from the province of B.C., to develop a childcare inventory gap analysis and an action plan for the region to try and improve the situation. The project included background research and consultation with childcare providers, municipal staff, community partners, and parents across the region. The consultation was, period, was cut short by the onset of the COVID-19 pandemic. However, we were lucky to have mainly finished our in-person consultations at that point, and we were able to complete the project using virtual methods. So how did we get to the number of spaces that we need in our communities? So what we did was, we looked at the number of children aged 0 to 12 in each community. And to estimate the current population, we looked at trends in previous census, as well as the enrollment trends in local elementary schools. Then we subtracted from that number that we came at, we subtracted the number who don't need childcare, and we came to that number of children from looking at national studies on childcare utilization for each age group. And then we subtracted the number of licensed spaces that currently exist. Do you come up with the estimated childcare need? The graphic below demonstrates the key concern of the consultation. How can childcare spaces better meet the needs of children and families in our communities? The childcare regulations landscape is very complicated. There are many different types of licensed and unlicensed care available. This slide is really just to give you an idea of the complication of the system. There are four major variables that come into play in different kinds of childcare. So the setting, whether it's a community setting or the caregiver's home. The type of care is usually the licensed type, but it reflects usually different ages of children and different numbers of children in care, as well as different settings. Care provider qualifications, so do the care providers have to have an early childhood education certificate? Or are they able to have a different qualification? And the level of oversight from the licensing body. So there are many reasons, different reasons, why parents would choose a different type of childcare. Some prioritize a home setting over a community setting. Some would prefer to have their children cared for by somebody who is a certified early childhood educator. And some people are looking for daycare that's close to home. The bottom line right now, however, is that whatever kind of care you want, you're probably not going to be able to get it, because there is quite a shortage. This consultation engaged specifically with particular groups that may face increased challenges in accessing appropriate care. Much of what we heard here came from community organizations that serve these groups, but we also heard from individual parents about their challenges. Many families struggle to find and retain care which is appropriate for their unique needs, such as Indigenous-focused care or a care provider who will care for your child, even though they may need extra support. I'm going to pass it over to Jane now.
Hello. I'm sure doing great. Okay. So I'm going to talk with you a little bit about the Sydney-specific findings. So Greg mentioned that one of the consultation approaches that we took was to complete a parent and family survey. That had, it was completed online. We had 613 responses across the region, 48 responses of which came from Sydney. I want to draw your attention to a few of the particularly interesting findings that are reflected on this slide. One is that, well, 70% of the parents we spoke with had their kids regularly in paid childcare for some days each week. 60% of those families, so 60% of families with children in paid childcare, were still looking for additional or other childcare arrangements. And I think that really reflects what Greg was mentioning earlier, that many parents do not, are not able to get their first choice in type of childcare when they're accessing care initially. And they just are taking what they can get. Another thing that we found was that, while there are a number of parents who are looking for part-time childcare, still approximately two-thirds within Sydney, and that's about par for the region, were looking for care five days a week. But almost half of those with care had two or more paid childcare arrangements. And often that was that they were cobbling together multiple days of care in order to reach the full five days that they needed, or that they had to make childcare arrangements that were different for one child than for another. So they had multiple drop-offs and pickups to address. And that was particularly an issue for parents on the peninsula who were managing all of those drop-offs and pickups, and then often managing a commute afterwards. That's difficult when hours are short in the childcare that's provided. Within Sydney, we did do some estimates, as Greg mentioned as well, on the number, the population of children aged 0 to 12 currently, as opposed to looking only at 2016 numbers. So we did estimate a small increase in the number of children from 2016. And we used that as part of the calculation of the number of spaces that were needed. When we looked at each municipality, we looked not just at the municipality as a whole, but trying to understand within neighborhood structures. Now, I understand that within the town of Sydney, these neighborhoods, really, this is using the Victoria Real Estate Board, neighborhoods are more or less important in some of the municipalities. But we were looking to see, are there, the majority of children living in the same area of the community as where the childcare is? And is that childcare also close to the elementary school? Because that's, can be a big factor for parents in terms of drop-off and pickup. So one of the things we noticed that is in northwest Sydney, as you can see on this map, and I recognize that that's not a neighborhood that is formerly used by the municipality, there was no licensed childcare. So if you live in that community, you weren't able to access childcare within your residential or community. We did look at the bylaws, policies, and plans for each of the municipal partners to determine whether there was anything, any opportunity to better support the provision of childcare within the municipality. With the town of Sydney, we found that the zoning bylaws, they were well-designed for home and group daycare businesses. But there is still some inconsistency with the childcare licensing regulation language. And that can be really confusing for people who are looking to open childcare facilities to understand, when they're looking at different sets of rules, what exactly is meant. So we have some recommendations in the report which align that language together. We were also looking for opportunities to signal support for the creation of childcare spaces, and particularly within residential zones where a number of families had expressed an interest in having more childcare. This next slide covers the inventory that we completed for Sydney. So we should say that this was completed in March 2020. And one of the outcomes of the COVID pandemic has been that some centers have closed, or some programs within centers have closed, because staff have been reluctant to return, or families have been reluctant to return. And so there actually are fewer spaces across the region now, we believe, than there were in March 2020. So you have to take these numbers as a point in time, which is always true. There's always new spaces opening and spaces closing. But I think there's been, there will be a more pronounced shift in 2020 than there has been for some time. When we apply those numbers of the existing spaces to that broader calculation Greg mentioned at the outset, what is the population of children? How many of those do we estimate need space? Because many parents choose not to put their children in paid childcare, or that childcare usage increases or changes over time, depending on the age of the child. We did look at, primarily at the number of full-time spaces excluding preschool from our calculations, though we captured the numbers of preschool, because preschool tends to be part-time, and so doesn't meet the needs for a parent that's working full-time. There are other many significant benefits to preschool, but it doesn't meet a need if you're trying to find a place for your child to be while you are working full-time. And we found here that if we were to meet 100% of the estimated need as of March 2020, that would require the creation of 233 childcare spaces within the town of Sydney. It's a lot, yeah. I saw a surprised look there. So Sydney is not alone in needing more childcare spaces. You'll note on this slide, as we look at the other municipal partners, Wasanich will need to create almost 3,000 spaces if they were to meet 100% of the need. And we know too, that parents don't always look for childcare in the communities in which they live. Some parents choose, especially when hours are limited, to have their children be in childcare closer to their work or school in order to make the commute a little bit easier for them. There are already, and you'll see this in the report, some spaces which are being created. Actually, they've just been opened, I believe, in September of this year at Sydney Elementary, Bicycle District 63. This last slide, and I realize I'm coming to the end of my time, just provides a summary of the types of recommendations that you'll see in the report. So as I mentioned, there will be some bylaws and policies, small changes that could be made to encourage the development of new childcare spaces. We have some recommendations for partnership development, so ways that the municipal governments can partner with early childhood organizations and regional governments in order to create the culture or a place that would support the creation of childcare spaces. We do have a specific recommendation in terms of childcare, building childcare spaces on land under municipal control. Although, we'll note that within the town of Sydney, there is not a lot of land within municipal control where that could be done. And then you'll see a number of recommendations that are advocacy-specific. This is very common in the UBCM reports, recognizing that the municipal government is not able to make many of the changes which support the creation of additional childcare. And so we've identified very specific areas where the different municipal partners can advocate for other orders of government to address the issues which have been identified locally within the town of Sydney. So that's the end of our presentation. If you have any questions, we're happy to answer them.
Okay. Thank you very much for the presentation. Are there any questions from committee? Counselor Fallett, then Counselor O'Keefe, then Counselor Duncan.
Thank you very much, Chair. Thank you to the two presenters. This is a very interesting report, and some interesting things came out of it, or certainly come to the forefront. And that is, it's not just the number of spaces. It also comes down to the cost of those spaces for the end user, and also the availability of staff. And in your report, you address the wages for staff and compare it to some other people, some other professions, and the amount of training and their wages. So I think there's a real disparity here in recognizing the value of the childcare staff and the cost. And then, of course, how do we then take, give the worker the appropriate salary or wage, yet still create a service that is accessible to the users? And so there's a big, there's another part of the equation that needs to be addressed. I was quite surprised, some time ago, a member of the community had approached me regarding childcare and indicated that, I believe, for newborns up to, I don't remember if it was a year or a year and a half, it's something like about $2,000 a month. And that's a significant price point to expect a parent to go back to work. And having to deal with that, then, of course, there's all the travel time. So I really don't have a question for you. But if you do have a comment to what I've just said, I'd be, I'd like to hear it. Thank you.
So the comment I can make is that this is an issue which is well-understood within the childcare sector, the balance of what parents can afford to pay and what they're able to pay their workers. And there are plans, provincial plans, and the $10 a day childcare model, which we do reference as a potential point of advocacy for the town of Sydney to endorse, results in a much larger proportion of provincial funding to subsidize childcare operations costs, and is linked to a significant increase in wages, which will also increase the number of early childhood educators or people interested in joining that field. So that type of model is really what's required. And when we look in other jurisdictions where perhaps the discrepancy between wages is not so high, it tends to be because there's additional provincial support.
Thank you very much.
Counselor O'Keefe?
Thank you. Thank you for the report. It's good to be able to bring all this information together. And we hear anecdotally that childcare is an issue, and we want to attract more families here. So it's good to have some clarity in terms of numbers and some concrete actions that we can do as a local government. One thing that occurs to me is the number of spaces that are needed just here. And I looked at the report for North Wasanich as well. Looks like we need, as you mentioned, about 233, and they need close to 300. So within our two communities, about 500 spaces. The other thing I noted is that it seems that most parents would like to have the daycare located close to their children's school. And because it looks like the majority of the needs are for school-aged children, if I've understood things correctly. And so what that takes me is, so it's mainly school-aged children. We want it close to schools. Schools are the ones that have the space, because as a local government, we don't have a lot of space. And I guess my question is around, how do we convince the school districts? Or what motivation or incentive is there for them to use some of their space? And I'll give just an anecdotal example. I'm familiar with in Victoria, where there is an onsite childcare center. That is, you know, different school district in Victoria. But they're under a lot of pressure financially, and also in terms of providing their core program to students. And what they ended up doing is, to meet their financial obligations, they've increased the rent for the childcare center. And so I'm just getting this sense that there isn't always sort of a common sense of purpose between the school districts and the community. So it seems like we need a multi-pronged sort of approach involving local government, the school districts, the provincial government, the childcare community. So how do we, how do we do that? Who is the champion, or how do we stick handle?
The school, the school districts are committed to increasing the amount of childcare around schools, I believe. And there are a number of projects throughout the region that have been funded now by the provincial government's New Spaces Program to develop some new after-school care. One of the challenges that they face often on the peninsula is that schools are usually on ALR land. And childcare is not considered a school use by the Land Commission. Is that correct?
Right. So that has been an issue, for example, in North Wasanich. Another point that we found in talking with the school district about this, while they have completed a significant audit of the sites where the school district land, where there are schools present on the land, the school district actually does own a fair amount of other property throughout the peninsula, which does not have a school on it. And they had not yet completed that site audit. So that is a point that we noted in the advocacy. It was that it could be something the municipal partners could ask the school districts to do, is to complete a site audit of all their land, because they may have other land near enough to a school, or there could be the potential for busing, which is quite common for after-school care programs, to have a bus which picks up children if there is not enough space on the site. So my understanding from the school districts is they believe that they've built all the spaces they can on the existing land where there are school sites. But that, if there were changes to the ALR, that might make a shift. Or the way that, not to the ALR, but to the way that childcare is interpreted as being part of a school use, which historically it has been, but more recently it's been interpreted differently. Or if they could look at other land that they own. Those would be the two significant options, I think, for the school district to make those changes.
The other thing I wanted to mention was that, well, there is a large need for after-school care for school-aged children. It is substantially easier to develop that kind of childcare because the educational requirements for employees are quite a bit lower. So there needs to be a focus on preschool-aged childcare as well at a large, system-wide level to try and address some of those problems with a lower, sort of, lack of workforce and wage disparity.
And that can be the larger issue in attracting families to a community is the presence of infant, toddler, or three-to-five care.
So that's good information. Just one follow-up question, if I may. So what I'm hearing is that the school district feels that they've done everything that they can in terms of providing additional space. There are some recommendations that are put forward to us in terms of what local governments can do in terms of zoning and consistent language and that sort of thing. So that's all good. But I'm just wondering, who will, who will actually, who do you see being the champion to move things forward? Because it's not necessarily something that local government would necessarily focus a lot of time on. It's a provincial responsibility. I see that we have a role. But it seems like you need somebody to kind of take the bull by the horns and to be, you know, the convener to sort of bring all these different stakeholders together to get something done. And I'm just wondering how you see that playing out?
It's one of the challenges, is that it's no one's responsibility to create and support more childcare. Some municipalities have chosen to allocate staff and resources to support the creation of childcare. However, as we discussed with the six municipal partners, that as a possibility, especially given the additional strain that municipal partners are under as they're managing COVID, and when budgets are already tight, it didn't seem as though there was room for a substantial allocation of staff for that. So within the peninsula, the best place that I can say is a champion for this is the Peninsula Connection for Early Childhood, which is early years table managed by the Beacon Community Services. And Beacon Community Services has certainly continued to be a champion to expand and create childcare. That, the support for additional creation of childcare, however, wouldn't fall directly within their mandate. But there is a recommendation within our report that the town of Sydney begin to send a staff person to Peninsula Connection for Early Childhood. And they may therefore have a better understanding of what the municipality can do to support childcare. So that's a very small staff contribution that might be possible within tight budgets and heavy workloads.
As you say, childcare is not, hasn't historically been a responsibility of municipal governments. And so as Jane mentioned in the presentation earlier, there are a number of actions related to advocacy. And we encourage the municipal government to push very hard on the provincial government on this issue, because it is really affecting local families and local quality of life and economies in a significant way.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Counselor Duncan?
Thank you, Chair. I have two young kids myself, and I've done a great job with this report. They've accurately characterized the issues. Also, the president of the Sydney Preschool. So I've seen that from the other side, too, trying to get staff and make sure that they're well-supported. And it's a difficult job. It's one of the great things about co-op, is you really get to appreciate what you're paying these people to do, how important it is. But when I, when I kind of look at this and the amount of advocacy and the amount of reaching up to higher levels of government, the sheer volume of spaces and hours, and trying to recruit people to go through multi-year degree programs to get them really high wages so that we can pay, and, we're not really high wages, but higher. Let's amend that. I start to wonder about, obviously, you've done a study because you were asked a specific question that was kind of, you know, pre-configured that we need, there is a childcare space gap, and that is the problem. And please quantify it and offer us solutions. But I started to think, are you aware of other studies that kind of look at it from the other angle of, is it actually more economically efficient and better in terms of psychosocial health for families and children in particular? To not, instead of trying to get better at creating spaces to send children out of their house for 10 hours a day, to be paid, to pay someone else to look after them, but rather to actually subsidize parents to be able to have more flexible work arrangements with their employers, or otherwise, so that they can actually, you know, only work the six-hour day that lets them pick up their kids from school, or whatever. And so I'm kind of looking at it the other way, going, you know, which one of these things, do I really want to push the provincial government to subsidize? And we don't get that from the questions we asked here of parents either, about whether they would perceive that to be the better option. I know I did. That, you know, being able to, you know, like, if you had the choice, would you prefer to be able to keep working part-time? If your house would be, you know, economically sustainable by doing that, and have your kid only just go to preschool or school and pick them up after school? Or is it more important? Do you genuinely believe that for your psychosocial health, for your children's well-being, your children should be in daycare instead? And that's the part I feel is missing. And I'm just wondering if you know about other research around that that would help us kind of weight which part of that advocacy is more important?
There certainly were a number of parents which we spoke with, and you can see that in the appendices of the report where there are all the comments, that there were a small number of parents who completed the survey and others that we engaged with who talked with us about that exact approach, preferring to advocate for parents to have the money to be able to keep a child at home. There are, and to work either less or to work differently. There are studies which look at the benefits both ways and the costs both ways. Uh, and, and, and you're right, that sort of was out of scope of the questions that we were being asked to answer. I, I would say that cost-effectively, um, it's, it's more cost-effective to have children in childcare. Um, and there are benefits for it. Sorry, if we were looking strictly at the numbers and not at the psychosocial benefits that you're noting. So if we were saying, w- what's, what's less expensive, um, it, it makes sense to group children together and have one childcare provider caring for a small number of children rather than children at home financially. Um, likely if those numbers were crunched, uh, and they have been crunched. However, uh, I think the key thing is that um, what we need to support is parents' choice. And we do definitely talk about that in the report, that we can't make assumptions that a hundred percent of parents want to have their children in, in childcare. So you see as we're looking at the numbers, we were saying, you know, especially when children are younger. Um, it's a very small percentage of um parents who have their children, they're infants in, in childcare. Um, that number increases a little as they're three to five and then decreases again as they're in school. Um, so what we were trying to reflect instead is let's ensure that parents have the ability for the choice that they want, that they make, that they know is right for them and uh, and their child. Um, and, and the question we were trying to answer was, how do we make those parents who are choosing to put their child in care? Um, how do we make that more possible? How do we create more spaces? So we, we didn't come to answer the other side um of how could it economically be more possible for parents to um be supported to stay home with their children if that's their choice? And, yeah.
I, I, I would, I would note that in the capital region particularly, it's, it's the cost of living is very high. So the cost of supporting parents who want to keep their children home, um, it's, it's hard for parents, even if they were being supported with some kind of public subsidy, it would really impact uh their quality of life and, and um uh, it's, it's, it's very expensive to live there uh currently.
Yeah, so that, but, but sorry, I don't think we've really answered your question because it, it was out of scope of our report and I, I can't point you off the top of my head to some of that research, but I can certainly look at some of the reports that we looked at and, and forward them on to you um for interest as, as you uh, think about how, how you'd like to advocate and how the Sydney council could advocate.
No, thank you. That was, that was definitely, that was helpful. Um, yeah, I mean, definitely, I could see how it would be more economically efficient to pay one person to look after 10 kids rather than, you know, 10 people to look after each of their own kids. So the, the uh, the capital required for the spaces might, might weigh against that as well. So who knows? But yeah, no, thank you for, thank you for, for this whole presentation. Thanks.
Chief, um, Mayor McNeil Smith?
Uh, thank you, Chair, and, and thank you for the excellent presentation, a, a lot of information and um thank you for, for some 25 uh recommendations as well. Um, want to start with, uh, I have a few questions. Uh, want to start with the um, with the B C average of, of 37 licensed childcare spaces available for every 100 children, zero to 12. How is that perceived as meeting the needs uh in the province, if, if that's an average figure for the province?
It, it would be under the um, the, so across the province, there is a, a lack of childcare. So um that average would be below the, below the needs across the province.
Okay. So would there have been advocates uh in the childcare profession or, or, or wherever that uh have made, have advocated to the province on what, uh, what a target number would be per hundred? As an average across the province?
Um, yes, there, and, and so they would vary, I think, in their advocacy point. Um, but it tends to be closer to two-thirds. So uh, a- approximately 66%. Um, again, use of childcare varies by age and it's difficult to determine how many parents might choose childcare if childcare was available. So sometimes parents, especially with larger children, choose to stay, in larger numbers of children, choose to stay home. Um, not because that's more economically viable for them, but, but a, a closer percentage would be about um 60 to 70%.
Okay. Uh, thank you. And then in terms of Sydney, the, it's um, at 16 uh spaces per hundred. Um, that is, uh, you know, some 42%. But if we were, if we were to double our childcare spaces, we would be at um 32 spaces and that would basically resolve our, our demand here in Sydney. But that doesn't, that doesn't really correlate with the provincial average. And I realize it doesn't necessarily, it wouldn't necessarily correlate with the provincial average, but I just see a wide gap there.
So the uh, the number of spaces in Sydney, uh, sorry, part of our report has a graphic which may be slightly confusing. But uh 16 uh spaces per hundred is for children that are school-aged. So for every hundred school-aged children, there are 16 after-school spaces. The overall childcare situation in Sydney is 24 spaces per hundred. Um, that's for all ages zero to 12.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Um, so uh, so yes, that, that um, that gap could be filled. Uh, um, it wouldn't necessarily come to the provincial average. And part of that, I think, is that there are some variations in choice and um uh, and, and s- um, sometimes the advocacy uh perhaps errs on the side of um off, of ensuring that there are more spaces than um national studies demonstrate are currently in use. Um, so we, we put our estimate of the number of spaces needed based on national studies of what parents were reporting by different age groups. Um, there are different methodologies that, that uh, um, different groups have used to come to that sort of 60% number.
Thank you for that. Um, the next question is, um, we, we talked about the location and, um, you know, and close to schools. Um, we have a, a daycare that's uh, that's opened um with a significant number of spaces right in our downtown uh business district, the Aranza uh building. And um I, I know of situations where there are employees working in the downtown that uh commute from wherever and, and it's convenient for them to have it close to their employer. Um, I don't see a lot in the, in, in the recommendations with regards to employers it, with regards to daycares being located close to large employers.
Hmm. I do think that um we might have, well, perhaps we should have included a, a recommendation for Sydney. I do think that the West Sydney um area uh is a, is a prime location to cite uh substantial spaces for daycare because um, there could be a large need there for daycare from people from outside the community, uh possibly who are working in the airport area. Um, uh, we, we did talk to some employers.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but um, it's.
Uh, employer, as with many of the people that we spoke with, many people would agree that it is very important for childcare to be created, but we're uh reluctant to be responsible for creating childcare spaces uh because they saw it outside as being outside of their mandate. And so that's certainly the perspective of many of the business and employer associations. Um, is that it's outside of their mandate. We, we did look at zoning possibilities, especially in some of the industrial parks, the light industrial parks. Um, potentially can be good locations for childcare. Uh, but um, we didn't find within the town of Sydney uh any um employers who were looking to create childcare on-site. It is certainly a viable uh option, especially with some of the larger employers.
Hmm.
Um, yeah, and I think Greg has, has pinpointed the area within the town of Sydney where, where we would suggest that that would be a good, a good place to um connect again.
We are seeing also some, some developments in the, in the, in the District of Sandwich where uh, the municipality is, is encouraging developers to include childcare as part of their development. Um, there is a um, a project uh which is currently going through council uh at the um University Heights Shopping Centre where um, they're asking for some, the inclusion of some childcare as part of the development. Um, and that is a possibility for um, for Sydney Council to think about in the future as well.
Well, thank you for that. And I guess, I guess there is two parts and you, you've touched on it with regards to um, close to employer and that is, uh, you know, we mentioned in downtown Sydney, that's a childcare that serves many employers. Um, and you indicated the West, I, I would agree, the, the West Sydney Business Park or the Sydney North Sandwich Business Park uh adjacent and part of the airport um would seem to be, um, would seem to be good as well. Um, my next question is, um, um, can you comment uh for a moment on the new spa- provincial new spaces program? This is, this, this step, as I understood it, when the six municipalities agreed, the six councils agreed to work jointly on this study, that uh, this is, this is a, a prerequisite, if you will, to uh, to applying to the new spaces program?
Mm-hmm. So um, applying to the new spaces program requires there to be a, a location. Um, so some land or a space where uh.
Municipality is in control of that land?
Well, it can be on private, but uh, the, the majority of funding comes, the largest amount of funding, so up to $3 million, as if the municipal or it's on public land. So the school district or um the town of Sydney and we.
Yeah. Sorry, I was just gonna say, it can also be land that the municipality leases, as long as the lease is long enough.
Right.
Yeah.
Um, so we did look within uh land that the town of Sydney owned and could not find wha- wha- what we understood was that there wasn't any which was appropriate to be um made into childcare spaces. And we also spoke with the school district, as we mentioned earlier, about what land they um were aware of where they could increase the number of childcare um spaces. So within the town of Sydney, we did not identify any um land which uh we would recommend could be used to apply for the new uh childcare spaces funding in publicly-owned land. It is possible for um private organizations or nonprofit organizations to apply for funding. And there is also, um, there are also startup funds for um uh smaller organization or merely individuals to create licensed family centers um within their home. And that seemed to us uh to be um a very viable alternative, looking at the geography in Sydney and the land that was available. So you'll see a, a focus of our recommendations is on supporting the creation of home occupation childcare and um finding ways to support those childcare providers to complete additional training. Because often family licensed childcare has completed a very minimal amount of training, um, 21 hours of training.
One issue with the, the new spaces fund is it is capital-focused funding, so it does not address any issues with workforce. And uh, the labor issue in, uh, in terms of uh early childhood educators right now is so extreme that if Sydney were to build 100 spaces on municipal land um with money from the provincial government, attracting people to those jobs may be quite difficult or may just um scoop them from another childhood, or sorry, childcare um center. So essentially just shifting the spaces around instead of creating new ones.
And if, there are, oh, sorry.
No, go ahead, please.
There, there are two um uh possible options which aren't in the report, but um likely will be coming to all the municipal partners uh later. I think one is, is mentioned. The um Island Health is looking at a pilot to um support outdoor childcare, uh licensed childcare. So currently outdoor childcare um is not able to be licensed. Um, but uh, Island Health is looking at a pilot similar to something which, which was done in Washington State to um support outdoor childcare, to be licensed childcare. And so they are looking for municipal partners who are interested in making um some space available within uh parks. And I think that that's, that um approach in childcare is something we certainly heard a lot from families in being very interested. And it's also very timely with COVID um to support the creation of outdoor childcare. Uh, Lulu's also was an example of what Greg mentioned, the, the childcare in downtown Sydney is looking to, they're very interested in expanding and they're struggling to uh attract early childhood educators. So there is another initiative which is underway to look at um new ways in training early childhood educators and getting them um into the field uh as soon as possible, um looking at the creation of multi-age uh um centers in, in homes. Um, and that also will, will be coming to the town of Sydney as a potential partnership. Um, but unfortunately, it, it wasn't in a place where it could be um presented as part of the report.
Well, thank you for, for that as well. Um, we're talking about schools, talking about employers. Um, I know the Panorama Recreation Centre that serves the, the three municipalities on the peninsula has uh has a certain amount of, of childcare. And uh, I think I'm aware of uh in Oak Bay, with Oak Bay Recreation, they have uh childcare available at uh, I think more than one of the recreation facilities. Um, uh, the Panorama Centre is not physically in Sydney, so that's perhaps why it didn't fall into our report. But wa- was there comment in the North Sandwich uh report with regards to uh the rec centre?
Yes.
Yeah, and they are redeveloping um a piece of property across the street from Panorama right now and looking to include it in the, in the rec centre. And so one of our recommendations was that they look at including childcare in that, in that site.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's been successful there to date and.
Yeah.
Lastly, is um, um, I guess this is a, this is a, a gentle ask if it, if, if this might be feasible and perhaps staff could comment. If it, um, it was, as soon as we saw, as soon as I saw this report and, and, and councillor O'Keefe touched on it, uh, it made me want to see the same, uh, the same information, the same numbers for the other five municipalities that par- par- um participated jointly with us. Would, uh, this, this is a very lengthy report, uh, would, would sort of a summary on, on some of the key aspects or key comparables amongst the municipalities uh be available?
Yes, so um we had to wait until we've finished presenting to all the municipal partners to be able to release uh the municipal versions of the report and the regional report. So there is a region-wide report which summarizes um all of the information for all of the uh municipal partners. And similar to the structure of the municipal reports, there's an executive summary for that, which is shorter. So then it's sort of um, seven pages, but provides that key summary uh of, of all the information as a comparator. Um, we haven't yet presented to the District of Sandwich, um, or Oak Bay or um Highlands, the Highlands. So the final report will be presented October 5th. Uh, and after that point, the, the full regional report will be um shared with all the municipal partners, including that executive staff.
Well, thank you very much again for the comprehensive report, the, the presentation this evening and taking our questions. So thank you, Chair.
Councillor Garner?
Thank you, Chair. Uh, uh, thank you both for the report and the presentation. Um, I have to say that it's nice when studies bore out the numbers that you know are out there, but just can't say. So, uh, and I found it rather striking, knowing it to be probably the case, but it's striking to see it written there that uh the second highest expense in a family's income per month is daycare costs behind mortgage and rent. And I think as that's as much of a challenge, how much more so for a single-parent family? And what they must have to struggle with on, on a monthly basis. Um, I just have a question for you with regards to the um, the survey that was done. And you mentioned a, a 7% response rate, but that was based on 2016's 700. And if you extrapolate that with the 1,045 that you came up with for 2020, it actually drops to four and a half percent. And I'm just curious, have you done some kind of a post-analysis that would indicate ways that we could have got those numbers up so we would have a, a more, a better indication for more people in our community that would have, you know, taken the time to do the survey?
Absolutely. So uh, I'm just, we're gonna make one small correction and then, and then answer the, the question. So um the 700 uh refers to the number of households because we had to think of how many, typically only one person from a household. Um, one of the adults typically answered the survey on behalf of the household. Uh, and the 1,045 refers to the number of children because there's often more than one child in a household. Um, and so uh, so, um, so, so it wouldn't be quite 4.4%, but you're absolutely correct that it, that um likely the percentage would be a little bit lower than, than 7%. It was just harder to um to estimate the number, the increase in the number of households with children than it was to estimate the um the increase in the number, the population of children. We do think that COVID um impacted our uh, um, the, the response rate for the survey. So uh, the COVID pandemic um hit just before spring break. And we had planned during spring break, one of the approaches that we often take with um surveys like this that are trying to engage parents where they're at is to show up and be leafleting parents as they're dropping their kids off and picking their kids up.
From camps.
From camps, uh, because it's a time that parents are often present. Um, and we weren't able to do that because many of the camps were closed. So that was a significant factor that we think reduced our um uh uptake of the survey. We also found very quickly that what, though lots of parents were home uh in that time, um, that their answers to the survey uh, they dropped off significantly. And then they were very focused on COVID kinds of questions and comments um rather than thinking about childcare uh as the issue will eventually return. Um, so, so the. So, so the few responses we did get through March really were less useful in terms of the broader focus of the study. So, that was one of the most significant issues. We, we also had planned more kind of drop-ins and promotions through the schools post spring break. So, we also missed the opportunity to do that, and that may be one of the factors within the town of Sydney itself, because we hadn't had an opportunity to get Sydney Elementary to promote it, other than communications through the Parent Advisory Council. So, I think those are, those, those were the two most significant issues.
Yeah, one issue, another issue that, that I, I noticed with the survey is that we were trying to survey all parents, but we really found that it was, those parents who didn't need childcare were self-selecting themselves out of the survey, and they weren't even interested in taking it a lot of the time. If they stayed home with their kids intentionally, and I was talking about on the street, I had many people tell me that they didn't want to take the survey as a result of that. So, getting that across, that we were looking for a fulsome response from parents generally was, was quite difficult.
Thanks, just one more question if I may. When you're referring to school district lands for potential expansion of use, was there any discussion about Greenglade Community Centre, which used to be an elementary school at one point in time, and is a pretty big piece of land that the school district owns?
Yes.
We mentioned it, and in our interview with the school district, and, and it hadn't been included in the audit. So, that's all I know, is that it wasn't included in the audit. But it certainly is, there's space there to build the type of childcare, after-school care, or, or sometimes childcare centers that have been constructed across the region. I've just lost the term that School District 61 is using. But they're basically, they're modular buildings, which include, they, they have a very similar design, and they include infant toddler, preschool, three to five, and after-school care. Greenglade Community Centre would be beautifully cited for a modular building like that.
It would be, and actually, I would suggest that it might even be a good spot for total redevelopment, because it is, it is quite a large site.
Although it's heavily used.
But there is daycare currently located in Greenglade, I believe.
Preschools.
Preschool, right.
Yeah. If that's an area that the town of Sydney would like us to talk, to talk further with us about after this, if, if staff wants to follow up with us about that, we'd be happy to do that and talk further about Greenglade specifically, because it is an area that the new, the town of Sydney could apply for new childcare spaces funding for.
Great, thanks very much for everything.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any additional questions for the presenters? And if not, there are some recommendations in the staff report? They could be all at once.
All of the recommendations, number one, that the 2020 Sydney Childcare Inventory and Action Plan prepared by Queenswood Consulting Group be received. Two, that the Recommended Actions and Implementation Plan outlined in the staff report titled Sydney Childcare Inventory and Action Plan Final Report, dated September 15th, 2020, be adopted. And three, that staff report back to council following adoption of a new official community plan to provide an update on the implementation plan for the 2020 Sydney Childcare Action Plan.
Second? Okay, that's moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Councillor O'Keefe?
Thank you, Chair. I have a question, I guess for staff. I'm wondering, in carrying out these actions, since there is a, a great deal of overlap and back and forth between us, us and North Sandwich, is this something that they would see, you know, collaborating with North Sandwich, or at least touching base with them to keep in touch in terms of what their, their plans are, and maybe take a, a common approach when advocating for some of these things?
Staff?
Through the chair to councillor O'Keefe, yes, staff would keep in touch on an informal basis with cohorts or with colleagues in the District of North Sandwich, just, just to see what they're doing in terms of advocacy and partnership and moving forward in their policy planning as well for childcare spaces. From, from my perspective, I do see value in those letters of advocacy and support to different agencies and organizations coming individually from the municipalities. So, there's more letters, there's one from each municipality. But I, I think it is our intent to keep in touch with local area staff from the other municipalities to see how they're progressing as well.
Yeah, okay, good, thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? Mayor McMillan Smith?
Thank you, Chair. And thank you to staff for the report. It was, it wasn't just a summary, it's, I think it spoke well to, to the recommendations that were made by the consultants. And, you know, put them in the Sydney context and, and what is practical for us to, to move forward with. A, a small question in, there's a one recommendation in the report that we, sorry, in the staff report, that we forwarded to relevant town committees. In the, in the consultant's report, it was more specific in terms of the Advisory Planning Commission, EAC, and the Official Community Plan Advisory Committee. Was that the intention of staff to move forward with that, or do we need to indicate that in the, in the resolution?
Through the, through the chair to Mayor McMillan Smith, yes, that was the intent of staff to those three groups.
Okay, just wanted to confirm, thank you. And, and to my colleagues, you know, there is 20, 25, 26 recommendations in the, in the consultant's report, and staff, I think, have rightly chosen over a dozen of those recommendations, and as I indicated, that put them in the context of Sydney. It's reasonable that the other 10 or so recommendations are, are not in the staff report, because they are advocacy to other levels of government or other agencies, which would really, should, generally comes, particularly things like UBCM resolutions come at the initiative of council. So, while council may not have considered for this evening, I, I think, a review of those again, and, and looking forward, we might reconsider those at a, at a future date.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor? Opposed? None opposed? That's carried. So, that completes that item, thanks very much. Moving back to the agenda. We're on to number 5B, the annual report from the Sydney Events Advisory Group, and we have a presentation by Morgan Shaw, Executive Director of the SBIA. You have the floor.
Thank you, good evening, Mayor and council. For those of you who don't know, my name is Morgan Shaw, and I am the Executive Director and event liaison for the Sydney Business Improvement Area Society. I also am serving as Chair for the Sydney Events Advisory Group, and that was effective June 2019. First and foremost, I'd like to express my sincere thanks on behalf of the Sydney Events Advisory Group, also known as SEAG, for reviewing our 2019 final report and allowing me the opportunity to present today. As the, the report was circulated, I won't go through it in its entirety, but happy to answer questions as we move through. I'll begin my presentation today by reviewing the purpose of the Sydney Events Advisory Group, which is as follows. SEAG exists to provide advice, identify resources, and offer suggestions to enhance and support the promotion and implementation of marketing for Sydney events. In 2019, some key community events that were initiated, initiated and implemented and promoted by SEAG members were as follows. Canada Day and Associated Celebrations, BC Boat Show, Vancouver Island Comic Con, the Seaside 5 and 8K Run, Christmas in Sydney, Treat Street, Victoria Film Festival, and Family Day Weekend in Sydney. Again, these are just some of the events that came out of SEAG. We have close to 50 events that are put on annually, so a large repertoire and roster, but those were some of the, the highlights from 2019. The Sydney Events Advisory Group remains proud of our achievements as a collective. Some of these achievements in 2019 included, but were not limited to increased awareness of Sydney as an event hub, increased collaboration between businesses and not-for-profit sectors, avoiding crossover of event dates and themes, increased collaboration and effectiveness in the delivery of events, and continued attraction of new events and conferences to the town of Sydney. Our 2019 deliverables included recruiting and hiring short-term contractors for the support of local community events. We were able to secure Clostridium $100,000 in media sponsorship.
Can I just interrupt for a second? I think we were getting some rustling of paper or something close to somebody's microphone. We're having a lot of trouble hearing.
Better now?
Give it a try?
You hear me now?
Yep.
You want me to go back, or shall I continue?
Just continue, I think.
Wonderful. We were able to implement and advertise initiatives for just under 50 events, and we were able to provide event services to conference providers and meeting planners. In surveying SEAG group members, organizations have identified the benefits of having an event liaison position in the following ways. Marketing efforts and support provided in advertising campaigns, exceptional support from the BIA when introducing new events to the town of Sydney and the community at large. Quality of events has continued to improve year af, over year. Significant improvement regarding the communication with the business community and other players in events on the Sandwich Peninsula. We've also been able to identify problems and provide solutions for the group, and firsthand, that's one of the greatest assets of the Events Advisory Group, is being able to sit around the table, talk about things that groups are wrestling with, and support one another in those initiatives. So, very proud of that and happy to be assisting in that way. As we know, 2020 has looked very different, especially in the event space, and I think we can all agree on that one. Many of the events that were planned for 2020 did not happen or were postponed. Effective March 2020, organizations were beginning to pivot their event delivery models in response to COVID-19. Meeting after meeting, members have continued to support one another with ideas and offering ranging anywhere from door prizes to support each other's events, all the way through to event space to ensure that everybody had the right amount of distancing that they needed for what they were doing. As we continue to meet as an advisory group, we, there are some questions as to what that will look like moving into 2020 and 2021, but certainly a lot of support around the table. I did provide a supplementary update to 2020 events that are coming down the line and subsequent organizational planning there. So, hopefully, there was an opportunity for that to be reviewed. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer for both 2019 and 2020. Thank you again for your time, and I'll open it up for questions.
Thanks for your presentation. Are there questions from committee? Mayor McMillan Smith?
Thank you, Chair. And, and thank you for the, for the report, and I think the format was helpful to us in terms of the.
Here. Here.
Sorry, microphone?
My apologies. Thank you for the report, and, and thank you for the, for the way it was presented in terms of over a dozen organizations answering the same questions and providing comparable information. Also helpful to see the, you know, the traffic counter information that's available, and those very significant numbers that, that arise when, when events are being held. As well as, you also included the website visits, and, and to have 8,000, 8,200 visits in the months of, of, of May and June and July is, is, is very impressive. I know that's grown quite a bit over the years with the BIA and SEAG's efforts. And thank you for the, for the cover report, which you, a short report which you provided, which is kind of current in the, in the pandemic, and providing an update for the, for the, for the groups. And just a, a thank you to the, to the organization, or to the association, if you will, having 15, 16 of the, of our community organizations and, and individuals that provide events together now. When SEAG first started about seven years ago, there was about half that number that were the original members, so to speak. And it's great to see that it's, how well it's grown, and the significant addition to, to events in our community, and the vibrancy that it creates. So, thank you to you and the entire, the entire SEAG group.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments from committee? Councillor Rintoul?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Morgan, for your presentation and for your leadership of SEAG. And I think if, if there's something that's so important about SEAG, it really is, as you noted, as a vehicle for communication between these organizations. And how valuable that is in times when the town is very busy with events, but also how valuable it is in a time when, when we're, when we're challenged to be able to host events safely. And so, first my appreciation to you, and, and then I'll try and put you on the spot a little bit, and if you're hearing from your, from your, from your organizations with respect to looking ahead, and I know there's no crystal ball, but is there any commonality there in terms of, as the events are formed, thoughts on how the town can assist with SEAG and with these organizations to continue to provide the opportunity to hold celebrations that, that our families are looking forward to, for, for events like Halloween and, and the upcoming Christmas season? You know, any thoughts from you in terms of, of what role the town can play, other than helping SEAG as a, as a communication vehicle?
Yeah, I think certainly, SEAG has been a, a member of the COVID-19 Recovery Task Force through the town of Sydney, which has been helpful in navigating some of those large-scale events that we do have coming up in the fall and winter here. We were able to put together a fairly robust Canada Day offering for the community, which was received successfully. And that was something that the town of Sydney played a role, role in as well. But certainly, just, just providing those communications to our residents and to the community at large, I think, you know, that's what we can be doing, offering as much support as possible. A lot of these events, because they differ so greatly in what they are providing to the community, whether that be an art show or concerts at the Windspear Centre, they kind of have to all go back to their own respective organizations and figure out what it is that they, they need, what it is that they're able to provide resource-wise, or the direction that they're going to go for the next, at least, probably, well, good, hopefully not into 2021 too much. We don't know for how long this will be, so, coming together, I think that that's what we've seen through SEAG, and we just had a meeting last, last week, and it was encouraging to see everybody working together to ensure that we'll be able to put on some, some robust planning for Christmas and for Halloween, to at least bring a little bit of normalcy to Sydney and for the residents especially, who have been supporting our community, so, yeah.
Yeah, well, thank you, I appreciate your, your comments, and, and thanks for, for pointing out your involvement in the task force from, from SEAG's perspective. It's a great, it's a great feeder to provide recommendations, certainly to, to the town and to council through, through the task force. So, my appreciation again to SEAG for their participation at that level. Thanks, Morgan.
Thank you.
Anyone else from committee? Seeing none, a motion to receive the report would be in order?
So moved.
Second. Okay, that's moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor? Opposed? That's carried. That completes our agenda. Motion to adjourn would be in order.
So moved. Second.
That's moved and seconded. I'll call the question. All in favor? Opposed? That's carried, and we are adjourned. Thanks very much, everyone.